Well, I'd like to call this meeting of the Urbana, it's a rescheduled meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. It's Wednesday, August 12th, 2020, and this meeting was rescheduled from Monday, August 10th. I want to thank everyone for their understanding and patience as we pulled this rescheduled meeting together. This was due to the direct show that roared through the city in the late afternoon on Monday, and several meeting participants lost power, so we were able to reschedule. And I appreciate everyone being here, especially Mary Alice on your birthday. So happy birthday, Mary Alice.
Thank you.
And welcome Julie Laut to your first rescheduled meeting of the Urbana City Council. We're delighted to have you here.
Are we not doing this town board meeting first?
No, Danielle had a commitment at seven, so we're doing the town board meeting after the city council meeting.
I see.
And the town board meeting is advertised to start at 8:00 PM. I don't think we'll be done with the council meeting by then, but that's just to give us the flexibility to go right into the town board meeting after council is over. So yes, we're going to start with the council meeting, and then the town board meeting will follow that. So I'd like to call this meeting to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Roberts? Mr. Colbrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
I'm here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. And Bill Brown has joined the meeting now.
Okay, thank you.
Next up on the agenda is approval of minutes from the previous meetings. That's the June 25th special meeting and the July 27th meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
I'll move approval.
And I'll second it.
Bill Colbrook? Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Bill Colbrook. Are there any corrections? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
You might also add my name, please. Dennis Roberts.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Dennis. Before we go on, I do need to let you know, announce that due to the governor's and mayoral emergency COVID-19 orders, the Urbana City Council chambers will not be open to the public during this meeting. Council members are meeting remotely using Zoom webinar. The public may watch the meeting on streaming services or on Urbana Public Television, or attend via Zoom, and the link to the Zoom webinar is included in the agenda, which is posted on the city's website for this meeting. And I'm present in Urbana City Council chambers. Additions to the agenda. We don't have any additions. I did want to let you know that we're going to move the closed session, which is included under new business number two. It's going to be moved to August 17th. We have a very, very full meeting scheduled tonight, so we're going to move that closed session to next Monday. So could I have a motion to remove this from the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Sharice?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up, our public input and presentations. We'll do the presentations first because they're relevant, I believe, to a lot of the public input. So we're going to move into, first of all, the Economic Development Quarterly Report, and that'll be by our economic development staff, Stephanie McMahon.
Good evening. For those of you who haven't met me, I am Stephanie McMahon, Economic Development Coordinator for the city. And I had emailed you my report, and I'm hoping it's also in your packets this evening. Wanted to just give a couple updates from the report. That staff has been working throughout the pandemic to provide information about resources to our businesses. We have had several businesses that received the payroll protection program funds that were available. Those are being depleted now, so we're watching for other resources that may come available to help those businesses. And we had just a couple receive the SBA Idol funds. And as you heard last week, 28 businesses received the CDBG funding that Sheila Dodd administered. So we have had a lot of help out there for businesses. Many are really struggling. This has been a tough time. As you guys all know, it's just been a tough time. But we have had some very creative businesses out there who are working to serve customers in new ways. Obviously, curbside pickup, online sales. The city has been supporting businesses through permits to allow drinking and eating on public property. We've been working with the UBA to have Saturday sidewalk sales. And that's starting to pick up a little bit for those people who don't feel safe still going inside to purchase items. And we even have a hair salon that's going to be trying to do haircuts outside. So everybody's being very creative to keep working and keep money coming in. The market on the square is doing really well. Our staff has done a great job of setting up a safe environment for our vendors and patrons of the market. In fact, they've done such a good job that the Illinois Farmers Market Association has used the Urbana market as a model to other markets that are setting up. So that's been really great to see. I've been able to attend a couple times. 99% of people are in compliance with masks, following directions on the aisles. And we've had over 3,000 in attendance the past few Saturdays. That is down a little bit from our regular year, but still, we're very happy. The vendors are doing well, and I was told six vendors this last Saturday were absolutely thrilled. They had their best Saturday ever and had sold out. So things are moving along really well with the market. Rachel Storm is leading our Arts and Culture Program. She has done a fabulous job of switching from so many of the public events that would have occurred this year to online and virtual creative activities for the public and for children. The Poets on a Park Bench initiative that was started, where our Urbana's poet Loriette was interviewing local poets, quickly changed to poets in a pandemic. And those sessions are available on our Facebook page. If that's something you'd like to go see, they're really great. A new mural on glass was put on display at the Cunningham Township Building in Urbana. It's a wonderful mural. I've put a little picture in your report, but you'll definitely want to stop by to see that. And among many other projects that Rachel's been working on, she's collaborated on a project called The Great Art Doors, which has given stipends to 10 artists who will be putting outdoor public art in parks in Urbana and Champaign. And that, they will be installed on August 24th. So that's something that the public can enjoy either on a walk or bike ride or driving by. So we'll all want to watch for those. Lori is putting up a couple of pictures we wanted to show you. There is a lot of activity happening in Urbana, a lot of construction on streets and buildings. 200 Vine is moving forward just across the street from our city building. We have a couple pictures here that she'll go through if you haven't seen it. I was told just today that they're actually going to be starting indoor carpentry work soon, and that they are on track to complete the project per their agreement deadline of May 1st. And I believe their goal was to market it to fill up by next fall. So it's great to see all of that. This project is the Gather Project that's happening at 410 Lincoln Street on the intersection of Lincoln and University. It's also moving forward well. Nick said today that they've already started working on the fifth floor, and they'll soon be working on the mechanic, finishing the mechanical section to start putting in all the utilities. So that's also moving along on target, on schedule. And that the, he also mentioned that the foundations for Gather South have been poured. On 1007 University, and I struggle to get a picture of this with the construction on university, but the stairwells and elevator shaft are done. And they started framing up this property, but I was told with the high winds on Monday, had to reframe it, start reframing this week because the framing was moved a little bit. So all of that construction is definitely a welcome sight in the community. I know it seems inconvenient, but it's a wonderful, a wonderful thing for our community to have happen. So. Just a couple of other updates. We still have entrepreneurs starting businesses in Urbana, which is great. We've been working with Septier, a one-man business that's located in CoLab, and they offer technology services to businesses. We gave them a business development grant before the pandemic, and we put their ribbon cutting on hold, not realizing we'd have to wait this long. But we are going to go ahead with a virtual ribbon cutting for them so we can get them their business opening grant. So we'll be posting that on social media to celebrate them being in Urbana. We have a new boutique opening next to Cinema Gallery. It'll be called Restyle at Bella, and it will be gent, and new clothing. They aren't open yet, and I haven't heard a grand opening date, but that is in the works. So we will definitely welcome them and work with them. Karma Trade, a business that we helped in early January. They sell repurposed fashions. And small business that received some of our startup grants has actually outgrown their building and expanded into a new location in the Analog Wine Library. And we're working with them. They've done a couple pop-up shops there, and they're going to go ahead and expand their layout and have a grand opening there soon. And finally, we have a new barber shop, The Road. I spoke with the owner this week, and he said everything's going really well. He is another one who, we were holding off his ribbon cutting, but we're going to go ahead and take care of that. So we'll be getting those on the schedule soon. We've also, we've heard from some home-based business startups, and those are kind of outside of the realm of our grants, but that is a trend we're going to be watching to see if more people try to do enterprises from their home, where it's a safer environment. Going into some of the statistics below, I won't go into a lot. The Think Urbana program, we still continue to have a lot of interest in that, and we'll be rolling out an online campaign in September to promote that program. I actually spoke to a contractor about two weeks ago who told me he still has five houses on schedule to build this year and hasn't started them. I think he was just finishing up his second or third for this year. So there's still a lot of interest in that, and construction continues. The last chart I have in your report is the home sales to date, which I thought was really interesting. There was a dip in home sales at the beginning of the year, but for June 2020, we had a 10.17% increase over June 2019. And pending sales for the same time period were reported at 312 pending sales this year versus 198 last year. So that was a 57% sales increase. So definitely, the low interest rates are helping. I did hear of one family that moved to Urbana from the Chicago area, kind of wanting a safer environment where they can work virtually and their kids will go to school virtually. So I'm curious to see if that will be another trend that we can market and try and attract new families to the community. So I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Any questions for Steph? Thank you, Steph.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, our next presentation we have is from former council member Eric Jacobson and his colleague from the University of Illinois, Santiago Nunez Corrales. And they're going to be presenting on the modeling that they've done related to COVID-19 and the implications for reopening the campus and actually, policy decisions here at the city of Urbana. Welcome, welcome back, Eric, wearing a different hat.
Hello?
I don't see Eric as a panelist.
I see him as a participant. Let me see. Okay. There we go. Jason, can you get Santiago in as a participant?
Santiago is already in.
He's in. Okay, great. And Eric's in now?
Yes. I feel better already.
Great. There you are.
So let me, I'll start and, you know, with the background. So this is a chapter in Santiago's thesis, which is on stochastic processes. Processes in which the underlying driving force is random walk. And nature is throwing dice. And this is very appropriate for epidemiological modeling because really, all we know is a probability that an infection will be transmitted. We don't know that it will be or that it won't be. So Santiago's become really, well, he is really expert in this type of process, and he's become very expert in epidemiology. And we were just sort of going to wrap this up and leave it alone as an academic exercise. But we noticed that the model was showing, the model for Champaign-Urbana was showing this bulge in coronavirus infections in the population at the beginning of the semester. And the reason it is, is that the people who are coming into Champaign-Urbana are coming from areas where there's a higher viral load in the population. And we made the assumption that, yes, they're reflecting the viral load that's coming in. And I think the university modelers have also made a similar assumption. You can see a little similar kind of a bulge. And so we went to, we participated in a meeting last week. I think it might have been last Thursday.
Yes.
And talked to people from around the county. And Mayor Marlin showed that she's really a scientist because she asked the most relevant question. Can you tell us how much difference it would make if we increased the social distancing or increased the constraints? And we thought about that. Santiago thought about that harder than I did because he's deep into the modeling. And realized that we could, we have the parameters from the historical record. We can parameterize for phase three and for phase four. And so we could show and compute. And in the graphs that I sent to you all, we could show the difference between how the response would go if we went to phase three or phase four. And it's significant. It looks like, so the bad news is that it looks as though it could be 800, maybe 1,000 more COVID cases if we stay in phase four than if we crank back to phase three, which I know is not an easy thing to ask. But the good news is that because the university's testing program is so robust, that we don't have to crank back for very long. Because essentially, almost all of the, if the testing program goes as the university plans and hopes, the great bulk of that extra viral load will be quickly squeezed out of the population. And so the, and so the extra restraints only have to go for a fairly short time. Now, I should say that there are a couple of uncertainties which could make things better or could make things worse. One kind of uncertainty that could make things better is if not so many people come back. If a fair number, a significant number of students just study online and they stay home. And I don't think we know those numbers. A second thing that could make things better is if the University of Illinois people, being smarter than other people, were more careful, and they're carrying, they're not carrying a COVID load as high as the populations they're coming from. So that would be great. There's one thing that we just thought of that could make things significantly worse. And it is that it turns out that the mandatory testing for the staff and the faculty and the students only pertains to coming onto campus. So if there's a lot of students who come back into Champaign-Urbana but are taking everything online, they can evade the testing for a long time and could party. And if that happens, then the situation would be worse than we projected. And actually, that didn't even occur to us until sort of yesterday or the day before. So Santiago is actually running those simulations now. So I don't know if you want to comment, Santiago, on how much worse that might make things or if that's really way too premature.
So first, council members, mayors, thank you for having me in this meeting. I want to make three brief remarks. First one is, we've been trying to be as precise and conservative in our model as it's deemed to be for the case of decision-making. We know these are not easy decisions. And in a prior life as decision-maker myself, I understand that there are economic and human impacts at play. The second thing that I want to remark is that, as Professor Jacobson has said, we are trying to better understand what happens if there are problems within the testing infrastructure. And we hope they will not materialize. But if they do, it is important to understand the impact so that plans can be improved on the fly, and we can get better information on how to act. One of the relevant parts of this has been to equate those people who are not going to be on campus but online with a delay in the testing of at least four more days. This is what the current simulations that are undergoing will provide information about. And the third remark that I wanted to make is that, in the context of this exercise, if we can make, if our model is correct, which we have tried to do the best to our possibilities to ensure that it is, and if things go right for the community, this will be a good exercise to, in the case that no pharmaceutical alternatives remain viable until spring, to understand how we may act more quickly towards spring and the potential impact with a much lower income, input of people into the community for the month of January. So in general, we will have better estimates for this contingency, and we will share those with you.
So glad to answer any questions.
I would, I will just jump in right here to kind of fill people in for a minute on what we've been doing here at the city, which complements the modeling and the work at the university. We've had a number of meetings over the past couple of weeks with City of Champaign, University of Illinois, Champaign-Urbana Public Health, county officials, basically trying to plan for the safe return of students to campus and the continued health and safety of the community. The modeling that was done on, by the researchers on campus served as the basis for the university's reopening plan. It also frankly served as the basis for Governor Pritzker's statewide plan since the beginning of this pandemic. And, and we've, we are, together with the City of Champaign and the university, are looking at some new emergency orders that get to the heart of the concerns that Eric and Santiago were bringing up. And these focus, will focus on face coverings. You may know that the governor's emergency order regarding masking was up past J-Car yesterday, so that is in effect. And we have the option of doing that at the local level and also focusing on individual behavior in addition to holding businesses responsible. So we're looking at face coverings as one. We're looking at additional measures related to bars and restaurants, mainly indoor seating versus outdoor seating and that sort of thing. And then a third area that we'll be looking at is the gatherings. We're seeing a lot of informal parties being held all around the city. Not, not, you know, not, not public events because we've suspended all those licenses, but, you know, birthday parties, anniversary parties, parking lot parties, parties in the park. And, and I suspect that's just, that's just going to increase when students return to town. So we're looking at what options we have related to gatherings. And those three things are really closely tied to the risk, increased risk of transmission and spread of the disease. The other thing that was pretty clear after a number of meetings with folks is that the first three to four weeks after the students return, and the university is estimating about 30,000 students coming back in person, or at least into the community, whether they're not, whether they're doing everything online or being on campus. The first four, three to four weeks, basically from here through mid-September is the most critical time, and that's the time when the most serious restrictions, if you will, need to be in place to keep, to keep a lid on things. And I think it's clear that what we do in the next month really is going to determine the course of this disease throughout this year and into the next. So that's why there's, you know, we're spending a great deal of time. We're, we're still in the process of drafting some of these orders. We expect to have either by the end of this week or, or next week, and then they need to be in place by the end of next week. So once we have a better idea of what language will be, I can, I can share, share the gist of them. But anyway, that's what a lot of time has been spent on the last couple of weeks, just trying to plan for the safest transition back to really what's closer to our full population. We haven't had our full population here since mid-March, when people went home for spring break. So this community really hasn't been tested to the full extent. Either COVID testing or just tested in terms of our ability to minimize the spread of this disease. The university is also working feverishly to make the saliva test available to the wider community, which is another key to this whole thing because you can get such rapid results. The faster you get your results back, the more effective your contact tracing and isolation and quarantining can be. So, so these, Eric and Santiago's model, I think, complements very well the models that have been done on campus. And together, we're going to come up, I think, with a plan. But it again is going to require the collective cooperation from the community. We can't do it alone at the city. The university can't. We absolutely depend on people taking this seriously and, and stopping the partying. So questions for Eric and Santiago? Except small birthday parties for Mary Alice, yes?
Eric and Santiago, thank you for all your hard work with this. I know that we've talked about this in the past. I'm really excited that you have results. I'm wondering if you could give for the broader public kind of the main takeaways from your research so that they, if they don't have time to read your whole article?
Well, I would say that, you know, the biggest, broadest takeaway is pay attention to the science. But then, with respect to the COVID itself, what our modeling says, and I think this is true of, you know, the modeling at the university also, is that testing is absolutely key. That testing is more powerful than social distancing in controlling the virus. Santiago did some simulations very early, months ago, that showed that if you tested more than, and isolated all the positives in more than 50% of the community, that the virus, over a period of a couple of months, would simply die out. You would, it, you would effectively eliminate it. So. So um, now, of course, that won't really happen because people are coming in and out of the community, the community is not isolated. But there's a chance if the, if the testing, but yeah, so, and and in fact, I think that's true. If you look at the curve that we drew, there's this big ramp up as people come in. This big ramp up in viral load and the level of infection in the community. And then it just gets shut right off and it's shut off because of the testing. So in a battle between, between the virus and testing, testing wins. And so this um, uh, the breakthrough that the university has made in terms of the technology of testing and the the availability of it and the cost effectiveness of it, I think is as important a development in the whole story of COVID anywhere that that there has been. And uh, and and and, you know, it's like a few other things, uh, it happened here at Illinois. So that that we're, that's really so cool. So uh, uh, so people should realize that and should be uh, and and hopefully it's going to work as it's projected to work. As both the models say it'll work, as the efficacy tests so far, you know, the the tests, the accuracy test so far say it'll work as the ability to put all the people through it. But if it works as planned and hoped, it's, it's a game changer, not just for this community, but it's a game changer for uh, everybody.
And again, the intense efforts in the next four weeks coincides with that ability to get everybody tested, traced and and isolated if necessary. So it buys us some time. Bill, you had a question?
Um, yeah, just a comment on the testing. It only works because uh, you're assuming people isolate and because they could contact tracing. Without the contact tracing and isolation, testing by itself doesn't really do anything. Um, hopefully people will isolate. I would, I haven't um, heard a lot about what their, how they're communicating with students um, prior to their arrival, arriving on campus. It's like a lot of model um, difference depends on um, you know, the difference in infection rates from where they're coming from to where they're, where we are now. There's could be a bump either way, but the bump will be smaller if uh, you know, if there's less infection on arrival. Has there been a communication with students prior to their arrival suggesting maybe they should isolate for five or six or seven days, whatever's left between now and the time they get here um, in order to reduce that initial infection rate?
I have not heard of any such communication.
I don't know. I know there's been a lot of communication with the students and many protocols in place once they get here, but I I haven't heard of, well, they've been urged to isolate before.
I mean, in some ways, it would almost be easier, I think, if I was a student to isolate at home. Um, you know, among my family who I've seen all summer, then it will be once I get to to campus where I haven't seen people for um, you know, five or six months. I'll want to uh, hang out with them and and visit and everything. So um, just a suggestion for people that might have contacts to whatever um, avenues there are to communicate with students between now and then. Um, I think it would help if if you could do that.
Good suggestion. And any other questions? Charisse? Unmute, please.
Yeah, I guess my question is um, how um, are we going to be able as well as at the university, but as well as mainly at the university, I guess, how are you going to be able to um, do any contact tracing? Because my understanding is a lot of people don't want to cooperate with that particular thing.
They have, they have um, very strict protocols in place. They'll be working with the public health district and um, basically they, they they've got that part covered. They've also set aside rooms for um, quarantining for students if necessary, especially in the dorms. And the the public health district will be the lead on the contact tracing.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
Um, Charisse, I just wanted to let you know that the university will not allow anybody in their buildings without proof they have passed their COVID test. So there's actually an app that you have to show as you enter the door and there will be people standing at the door checking. There's also going to be people walking around the hallways, checking to make sure that the students in the classroom are adhering to the social distancing rules and the masking rules. They're putting a huge amount of effort into trying to make it as safe as possible on campus.
And the app is a key component of all of that. Also, students moving into the dorms, the first place they go is State Farm Center and they will not get their key unless they've been tested. So there's a lot of um, there's a lot, there's a lot in place. It's it's a, it's a remarkable plan.
So what happens if they test positive while they're at the Assembly Hall?
Well, then they don't move into their dorm. They go to Plan B, right to the next step. They've got, they've got that covered. They've got that covered. Our, our concern here is how do we um, get the policies in place to complement uh, what's going on in campus and limit the spread in the community? So that's, that's where our focus has been. And it's been a fascinating and um, arduous experience. But but I I I have to say, I've never been more proud to be an alum and a retiree and a parent from the U of I and a member of this community. The collaboration in Champaign County is head and shoulders above anywhere else in the state. And that's coming from, you know, the public health district is hearing from people all over the state. But anyway, um, any, any further questions? If not, we'll keep you posted. Thank you, Eric, and um, pass along whatever other information you think we need to have.
Okay, yeah, it was great, great to see you guys.
Thank you. Come back anytime.
Okay.
All right, the last um, presentation is 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 very brief. It's um, we wanted to clarify some of the juvenile arrests and detention data. Last week, um, during public inputs, some data was presented on the um, ju, number of juvenile arrests and detentions in um, Urbana. And um, the uh, focus on the really alarming and disproportionate number of black youth represented in these statistics. And no one is disputing this. This is a, this is not just an Urbana issue. It's, it's a nationwide issue that has to be addressed, I think, as part of the overall look at systemic racism in this country. But what we wanted to make sure is that people had, what we noticed in some of the data that was presented is that the, some of the numbers were not accurate as far as um, the number of people, actual numbers of people involved and the disposition of those arrests. So um, Melissa Hendrian worked with the chief and Chief Seraphin, just wanted to provide you some of the um, some of those numbers that will serve as the basis for the discussion going forward.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, as the mayor said, this is clarifying. Um, I'm not going to present things that are so uh, different. But we're going to, I wanted to clarify and share a few uh, bits of of data. So what I'm going to try and do is share a screen here. Um, last week, the the data that was presented, there were two hundred and fifty-two arrests um, of juveniles and eighty-four percent of those were were African-American. And so what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you a slide in just a second. You'll see where actually, and like I said, this is clarifying, I correcting, there were two hundred and five arrests. And someone said, well, that's not, why is that? And how do some of those numbers work? And and for those who've been on council for a little while, you've probably heard similar presentations. So as as an example or a point of illustration, um, if someone is arrested for uh, or there's a shoplifting incident and they uh, punched the store staff, um, that would be a retail theft and a battery. Even though there's only uh, one human being arrested, that counts in the tally of arrests as two. And that has to do with uniform crime reporting. And I won't go into all of that because this, we're changing from UCR Uniform Crime Reporting to a NIBR's system, National Incident Based Reporting System. So I won't go into all of those details. I'm not sure I know all of those details. So that's why the number will go down from two fifty-two to two zero five. The other thing I wanted to mention is that in amongst that two zero five number, you will, you 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 may have repeat um, offenders. So we might have an encounter with someone in April and then have an encounter with someone in October. So the two oh five number isn't necessarily two hundred and five new individuals, uh, but there are two hundred and five arrests um, of juveniles in the last year. So what I'm going to do next, this is, this is, and what we're talking about is twenty nineteen data. So we're going to share a screen here in a second. So um, this is the data from uh, twenty nineteen, two hundred and five again, total arrests. One hundred and eleven, the biggest chunk of the pie there, just over, just over half. One hundred and eleven arrests that have resulted in a um, trip to the juvenile detention center. A juvenile detention center arrests, generally speaking, are those that are felony arrests. So if there's been a felony committed, that's, that is, that is what um, necessitates the trip to the juvenile detention center. There might be other instances where um, there might be a juvenile detention center, if it's some sort of a warrant situation. Um, the JDC, as we call it, does have a scoring instrument um, that for those who've had repeat issues might necessitate a trip because the scoring instrument says um, that they would be there. Um, occasionally, we might have an incident where we have an event where it might be a misdemeanor such as domestic battery, where you might have an older, just sixteen or seventeen-year-old who might be battering, fighting with mom. Um, and that might be juvenile, a juvenile detention center trip. When it comes to JDC, I want to, I want to also, well, let me go on a couple and then I'll circle back around. So you also see then uh, eighty-five of those arrests were youth assessment center referrals. A youth assessment center referral um, can be a direct transport trip where the officer would actually take a youth there. Or it might be, and about three out of four of those are actually the child's taken home, the juvenile is taken home, and then they are released to a a parent, guardian, and with a referral to um, hook up with the youth assessment center at a later time. Um, Youth Assessment Center is a great tool that we have here. And uh, I actually have used this as an example, as we've had some discussions uh, regarding policing moving forward and how do we do things and how do we build something that will last? And the Youth Assessment Center is an example of those, of an effort like that, um, where the county all works together, all the different police agencies and conjunction with the state's attorney's office, and they do case reviews and they have scoring instruments for the child to come in so they can, when they have that juvenile that comes through their door, they can sort of figure out what the problem is. And if they're acting out at school, why is that? Well, they're having reading issues or are there substance abuse issues? Or are there other home issues that we need to uh, get some counseling services for? So the Youth Assessment Center um, is where a lot of, as you can see, forty-one percent go. Uh, the warrant and release is a pretty small component um, where the officer might again take them home again. And um, the incident might be of such of such a minimal nature uh, that they would uh, not make a referral to the Youth Assessment Center. But generally speaking, um, the the Youth Assessment Center would be a place that we would like uh, to refer the youth. With regards to JDC, as I'm circling back around here, just because someone goes to the juvenile detention center does not mean that they are being charged. The juvenile detention center um, has access to other information. They might decide no. And they will also make referrals to the Youth Assessment Center as well. So um, a a JDC trip doesn't necessarily mean that the state's attorney's office is going to file a petition of juvenile delinquency in the matter. This is just where, um, this is just because of the felony nature. They would go there and then uh, the JDC might make a referral um, to the the Yak, if you will, later. And so this, move something on my screen here, this, um, and these are the percentage numbers um, with regards to the the racial breakdown of the JDC.
We're not seeing that on the screen, Brian.
Your screen sharing is paused. How about a resume share? Thank you for saying something. Mayor, can you see that one?
No.
What you might try to do, chief, is stop sharing and then reshare once you're on the second slide there.
There you go.
Now we, now we, now we see it.
All right. I do appreciate you saying something. So what you'll see here is um, the rows and columns with regards to JDC and the Youth Assessment Center and the warrant and release columns. Um, what you don't see necessarily is a a grand total on this particular slide. But I did a little bit of the math for uh, for all of us. And eighty-two percent of those juvenile arrests are African-American. Eighty-two percent. That, those numbers are not good. Um, and as a matter of fact, as a community, we've recognized that those numbers are not good. And that's why we have things like the Youth Assessment Center to try to address some of those problems. And that's why we have issues or, excuse me, that's why we have efforts like the Coalition, where there's an effort to try and share information about a variety of different programs. That's why the city and the school district uh, jointly created the Self-Made Kings uh, program where we've tried to identify um, at-risk youth and try to make some of those uh, those changes and and work with the school on those things. So um, I I just wanted to to share this as well. Um, again, this is not, I I'm, no, no one's going to try to twist these around and say these are good. I absolutely understand that. Uh, but these, these are the exact numbers as Melissa was able to help me pull out of the uh, the ARMS database. So um, I will, those are the, just, we only prepared a couple of slides tonight, trying to do amongst our other things. I, I know this came out last week, so um, these were the couple of the slides. Just sort of provide a little bit of, I guess, some more context with regards to um, this particular issue.
Charisse?
Um, Bryant, of the, of the um, percentage that go to juvenile detention, do you have any idea what percentage of those children do end up getting charged?
It's a interesting question. I don't, that's not data that we keep. Um, I will probably be able to have access to that. Uh, Deputy Chief Searls and I were discussing this later. Um, and we we tended to think it's probably around half, but I honestly, I could not give you a good answer. That's just sort of a guess, Charisse, so um, I don't have that information.
Okay, also, um, in that being such a high percentage, I know you said that um, that some of the kids are repeat offenders, so to speak. So does that, that includes, um, but that also, uh, when you, the other thing is that the, the um, if a, if a kid does something like, you know, shoplifts and and assaults a clerk on the way out, that's counted as two arrests or not?
So in the initial data that was presented, that raw data that was presented last week, that counted as two. In the two oh five number from tonight, that was, that was corrected for. So if if a little Bryant Seraphin was arrested for those two events in tonight's date, that's only counts as one actual arrest.
Okay, so I I guess, so why, why do you think there is such a high percentage of black youth that are um, arrested or detained or uh, sent to the Youth Assessment Center, any of that? Why, what do you, is it some, is it something that your, that your police officers are seeing the same kids over and over? Is it that um, um, an idle, you know, idle mind is a playground for the devil? What is, what do you think?
I, well, see, that's, that's, that's the ten million dollar question, I guess, Charisse is, and if that's the right saying or not. But that's, that's exactly the question. I don't, I don't have a solid answer for you. That's why as a community, we've looked at things and whether it's sort of the compounding effects of a variety of sociological inputs, um, whether it's housing issues and poverty issues or jobs or all of these things. Um, I I don't have exact, I don't have a perfect answer for you. Um, I I think it's multifaceted.
Are are most of these kids um, Are, are most of these kids that are being arrested or, or detained, are, do, are they from particular areas of Urbana? Or are, is there, in other words, it's like, you know, because we've heard a lot about overpolicing of, of black folks. So my, my question, I guess, is, is it one of these things where police just happen to be in an area where they know that there's going to be, where there's been a lot of, of, of mischievous action before? And so therefore, you know, that's an area that they go to and sure enough, you know, it happens? Or is it, or is it based on calls that you, you get from parents or from the stores or something like that?
I think it's, I think it's going to be all of those things. I told the mayor when I did the initial workup, I said, I don't, I said, right now, we're in the middle of a variety of different policy reviews and a variety of different tasks. I said, I, I personally feel this is going to be the newest subcommittee on the Mayor's Advisory Commission on Public Safety and Policing. That, that, that will be people that can go and perhaps dig down and do a little bit of a deeper dive on this. But this is an issue that is not just, is not just an Urbana issue. Charisse, this is, you know, I would suspect that a lot of the things that you listed will be, will be inputs.
Okay. We, this, this obviously is, is a very serious issue and it does need, this is where the work needs to happen. One of the areas the work needs to happen in Urbana and in the community as a whole. So if the council is interested in a deeper focus on this particular issue, then that, that I think would be something we could, we could add to the advisory committee's work. So I'm seeing some heads nodding, so we'll, we'll look at that. Anyway, again, just wanted to clarify some of the numbers. Bill?
I'd say at least it probably wouldn't be too hard to find out whether those arrests were made in response to a call or if it was an officer initiated contact. I think that would be valuable. The question I had was what, it sounds like there wasn't much officer discretion about whether they went to JDC or not. Most of those, you said, were felonies. And then there was another category where the JDC had a formula. So do the officers decide at all whether they can take, whether they take someone to JDC or to the Youth Assessment Center?
So yes, Bill, there are, there are, there is some discretion. Most of policing, there's going to be some. So for instance, to, to fighting in a, in a park is a battery that occurs in a public way. It's an aggravated battery and technically it's a felony. And we've, we've encouraged the officers now as to, it's two 15 year olds fighting in the park. Let's not necessarily take that over there. If it's the third time this month we've dealt with that particular youth, maybe that would be an input in that sort of decision-making process.
Okay, so I guess as far as the charge goes, even if it's charged as a felony, in that case, they might decide to take them to the Youth Assessment Center.
Correct, they might. And I know, I want to, so, and we use the dude's charge because everybody sort of kind of gets that, that, that particular lingo. Ultimately, when we do our initial workup and we write a police report, the state's attorney does the technical charging. In addition to that, they may or may not agree with what the officers have written. They might have access to other information the officers might not know with perhaps maybe there was, you know, although I guess there's probably less of that nowadays, but they might realize, oh, this, this child was here on probation from another county or might be aware of an event in Rantoul that the Urbana officer didn't know, so.
I'm sorry, what is the right term for that? I mean, do, do you call it charging? Does an officer charge? I know the state's attorney.
The officers probably call it charging too, though. It's technically, so adults' charges are filed with, with, it's charges when it's a, a youth which is 17 and under. That changed a few years ago. There was a couple of years, maybe in the mid-teens where I believe we had, depend, if it was a felony, it was the, the, the 18, the 17 year old was treated as an adult. And if it was a misdemeanor, they were a juvenile. And they had a couple of years and then they finally, that I think was just to ease a transition to 18 and over adults, 17 and under were juveniles. The, so it's technically they file, the, the state's attorney files a petition, a petition of juvenile delinquency. So the, that's, that's, I guess, the, the technical term.
Okay. Julie, you had a question and then Jared, did you have your hand up? Okay.
Yes, I know that this question won't be able to be answered right now, but it's very pertinent to what was just, especially Charisse's question to the chief. Just a point of clarification to make sure that the city and the chief aren't laying blame on, you know, one aspect of our community for these very disparate numbers. I appreciate seeing, you know, the disparate numbers, but I just want to, I guess, just make sure as a question that we, as a council, as, you know, the police are not approaching this particular question that Charisse, I thought, had a very good question and claiming that the answer would be, it's a problem within, for example, within the black community.
So I know it's a problem, it's a problem within our community. Entire community, and that's the entire community has to ask itself what, why and what we can do going forward. Thank you, though. Jared?
Chief, do we have easily accessible data where this came from to see if, how many arrests that went to JDC were felony arrests?
Yeah, we can, I'm sure we can get that. I don't know, I don't know if it's easily accessible, but yeah, we can be able to find out the JDC, which were felonies and which were, I guess, other, and then have to sort through, so. Yes, we should be.
We.
Well, I, I think we're going to, given, given the, given what we need to get through tonight, it's obvious that this topic, this is a topic we need to focus on and.
A topic we need to focus on, but we're not going to right now. I wasn't done asking questions.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say this is not a discussion item tonight, so I want to make sure we get, get your questions in and then we will be focusing on this later. Go ahead, Jared.
Chief, do you need suggestions? Because we're going to come back to this for statistical information that I know is going to be asked about this, that people are already asking about this. For example, where these arrests originate? How many of these arrests came from Urbana Middle School or Urbana High School? For example, that would be a really good thing to know. How many arrests were perpetrated by SRO officers versus officers acting out in the field elsewhere? Those kinds of things. Should we send you suggestions on all those kinds of things that we'd like to see going forward?
I suppose the answer to that is yes. And then we'll kind of look at, and I have to try to figure out, sit down with Melissa and say, okay, in your work pile, where do we, where do we want to do these? And that's sort of why I kind of wanted to say if there's, if, if we're going, these are exactly the kinds of things, Jared, I think, where we want to, that's that deeper dive. And so, yes, we can get that, we can start collecting that and taking a look over last year or the year before and the current year. I'm curious as to what impact the COVID has had on, on these kinds of, you know, and some of this, these variables. So yes, if you send them to me and/or Melissa, and I think a lot of you guys have Melissa's email as well, we'll sort of start compiling those.
Okay, well, I'll definitely start doing that. And I know people are going to have a great many questions because this is a horrific statistic that came out. And I would, just as a polite suggestion, suggest that we refrain from talking about kids going to jail as a trip. That's probably not the correct reference to getting a, going to jail. So just wanted to put that out there.
Okay. Thank you. We'll go to public input now. Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I, I'm Tracy Chong, resident of Urbana. Tonight, I just want to say how disappointed I am with the way city council is addressing police misconduct and accountability issues that the public has brought up for months. When I see items on agenda like future of public safety and policing, I do get a glimmer of hope and set aside everything else to pay attention to the discussion. However, it always ends up such a disappointment and a waste of time. For example, quite a bit of time has been spent on discussing this very vague advisory committee that Mayor Marlin seems to announce with pride. This avoidance of responsibility is very disappointing. When we attend city council meeting week after week, we want to hear discussions from each of you on how you are directly addressing the problems brought up. We don't want to hear you pushing off the responsibility to some group of civilians to do the outreach, to find solutions. How is it still unclear to each of you that what we want, that we want to hear meaningful solutions from you and not our spend discussing how you can establish an advisory committee to come up with solutions? We don't want more PowerPoint presentations filled with fluffy terms, pie chats, flow charts. We want to know how you are addressing the problems brought up each week. Stop using the excuse that change needs time. Stop passing the responsibility to others. These are issues that the public wants addressed by you. The police budget is a large portion of the Urbana budget. This is not a trivial matter. We want to hear you discuss police reform, police accountability, police transparency and transparency in public records. We want to hear how you are going to address the roadblocks that residents are having with FOIA issues. Not hear excuses on why city staff is creating the roadblocks. It was appalling how you turned the issue into a session blaming members of the public who are working to ensure government transparency. Worse still, these excuses and blaming seem to be endorsed by Mayor Marlin and even coming from Mayor Marlin. Under such leadership, is it any wonder that the problem still fester on? Finally, what are the core values and mission of the city of Urbana? These terms are thrown around a lot, but there's no place where these actual values and mission statement can be found. City council members, Mayor Marlin, can any of you tell us tonight where the, what are the core values and mission of Urbana? Do city staff have access to these values and mission statements? Mayor Marlin, you use these terms frequently. Could you clarify what a banner's core values and mission is? Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Hansen.
I can hear you okay?
Yes.
Do you have more than 20 people speaking tonight?
I don't know yet.
So we're, are we doing three minutes or five minutes?
We're doing three minutes, yes.
Okay. But if you don't have less than 20 people, then it needs to be five minutes, right?
That's what council rules say, yes.
I will speak and I'll, I'll try to just speak quickly. I don't intend to take a long time. My name is Christopher Hansen. I'm a resident of Urbana for 18 years. I am kind of wondering again, what it's going to take for us to have honest discussions at the city council level. We had this big FOIA presentation recently and we basically just saw city staff lie about FOIA. They lied about how many recurrent requesters they'd, they'd determined and they lied about who was being charged fees. It's not just recurrent requesters, it's, it's several people that I know of asking for documents about police records. And our city attorney, James Simon, made up all this nonsense about people asking for city credit card numbers or asking for his home address. No one is asking for city credit card numbers and no one cares where James Simon lives. And then we see the mayor just repeating these lies and I, I suppose it's because it just suits her political goals. But then last week, Mayor Marlin publicly thanked me for my ongoing civic engagement. But at the same time, Marlin also said that she publicly agrees that I should be charged thousands of dollars for public records. So this all just seems very disingenuous. Meanwhile, the people who are being paid thousands of dollars a year to be civically engaged, the city council members and the mayor, don't seem to be spending the necessary time to educate themselves on the issues. We saw this last week when Mary Alice Wu took time to ask very rudimentary questions about the CPRB. This is an issue that's been discussed very loudly for several months. The CPRB ordinance is only eight pages long and I'm not sure why some of the city council members haven't read it yet. So again, I'm just wondering what it's going to take for the council to show some leadership, to start having honest conversations. And the way I see it is right now, we have this kind of Trumpian form of government where instead of leadership and responsibility and good core values, Urbana responds to problem with, problems with ignorance and lies and deception. And, and this Trumpian form of government isn't working well at the federal level and I don't think it's serving Urbana well either. So the newest issue we're talking about is making this advisory commission for police. And this is to move the discussion on policing away from the city council. And I want to point out that this is not what the public is asking for. The public wants their city council, their elected officials to discuss policing and start making changes now. I think by trying to push this off to some other committee, you're really shrugging off an important opportunity to shoulder responsibility, which is, that's what leaders do. You shoulder responsibility, you don't, you don't shrug it off. And when you're talking about this advisory committee, I, I hope you will discuss in some detail the, the committees that we already have had or have, which are the Community Alternative Policing Advisory Committee. This was dissolved by Mayor Marlin, I think, in 2018. And then we also have the Mayor's Neighborhood Safety Task Force, another board, which appears to have been dissolved under Mayor Marlin. So I'm wondering, when you talk about this new police advisory committee, how you think it's going to be any different than these other committees, which seem to have just disappeared and weren't really useful in their time? And I also want to know why those committees disappeared. Thank you.
Next up is Amina Payne.
Thanks. Happy birthday, Mary Alice, by the way. Mayor Marlin and Lieutenant Seraphin. As I mentioned in my WAND TV interview, it is of utmost importance for you to be working with organizations who are attempting to do the hard work to address youth crime rates, policing issues and academic opportunity gaps. We are not enemies. I'm aware that you acknowledge and share the concern of community. Therefore, it's vital to reach out to parents of these at-risk or high-hope students and the importance of liaising with schools to better engage kids. You set aside, as per the agenda and the recent presentation, valuable time to clarify data. There's a lot of good in black youth and I know that you can see it, but it's a misstep to believe that by correcting any data, this is the best use of your resources. This demonstrates a reactive, not proactive agenda. As Jared stated as well, this is not a trip to the JDC. This is not a holiday. This is a traumatizing experience for a child. In 2019 and 2020, out of 46 Urbana officers that arrested children, only two of the 46 apprehended more non-black kids than black kids. Your data confirms that 61% of all Urbana officers who arrested children arrested only black children. The average age of apprehension was 15. Last year, the Champaign-Urbana community marked 10 years since Kwani Carrington, a 15-year-old child, was murdered by police. And in spite of all the touted changes, we are still seeing violence committed against the black community members by law enforcement and vigilantes. The connection between academic opportunity gaps and student involvement in the justice system needs to be highlighted and addressed. Disengagement in academia from young people may lead to increased involvement in the justice system. Over half of black youth arrests occurred during the academic school year, that September to November and January to May. Nearly a quarter of kids referred to the YAC were re-referred due to successive offenses. Furthermore, oppression in education is rarely enforced with obvious and heavy-handed practices. Rather, it's artfully threaded in a way that makes it almost invisible to those outside the groups being oppressed. As an educator, it's my responsibility to call out injustice that permeates the education system and demand better. Educated societies inspire and encourage its citizens to question the status quo. An educated person understands that respect trumps harmony. I urge the city council to not harden your hearts against the voices you're hearing at these meetings, not to close your ears and resolve to ignore people. It's not enough to promise to do better. Address the ways now in which particular communities have been hurt. Address the trauma that has already occurred and take measurable steps to ensure it does not continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Nixon.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
So first of all, happy birthday to Mary Alice Wu, having just learned this from Amina Payne. It's my birthday today too, so I'm smiling. Secondly, this is Sarah Nixon, Urbana resident. Mayor Marlin and city council, over the past few months, I've been hearing the term "coming from the streets," a slogan of all cops are bastards. I personally don't agree with that notion and my position comes from solid personal experience. A few minutes ago, Urbana Police Chief Bryant Sarafin presented to the council two Google slides and he gave a smooth little presentation in which he pretended no idea as to why the actual numbers on his slides are 89% of Urbana Police Department arrests of children target black children and 9% white kids. And Chief Sarafin says, and I quote, "Those numbers are not good." Mayor Marlin, you need to be asking real questions and getting real answers from your appointed staff. So when Chief Sarafin says, "Those numbers are not good," is that those numbers are not good as in black kids are bad or as in Urbana cops are racist bastards? And when he also says in response to Sharice Percy, asking and asking again for clarification and explanation for those statistics, that he imagines the reason for those numbers has to do with jobs or housing or heaven's only knows. Again, is he saying black kids are bad and deserve to be arrested? I also noticed Councilmember Julie Lout attempting to obtain clarification. She asked a heartfelt question, which I noticed was interrupted by the mayor. And Mayor Marlin, you not only interrupted her, but spoke over her and rephrased her question, shut her down. And it felt like you did the same thing to Jared Miller. I think this is an extremely serious issue. I think the time has come to stop whitewashing the issue of Urbana Police Department's severe bias in the way it handles the population of Urbana. And I'm going to close there with a final note that I and the community continue to be appalled and ashamed of our city government for leaving Aliyah Lewis in the gutter, ignoring her plight, and endorsing racist Julia Ritz's wrongful prosecution and wrongful concocted criminal charges against Aliyah Lewis, who is guilty only of being in the wrong place at the wrong time, being a little bit mouthy, or as I would say, assertive. And who was assaulted for quote unquote, "not acting like a lady" by your police officers. Utterly shameful. Thank you.
Next up is Giovanna.
Okay, there we go. Hi. Giovanna T. Penantero, resident of Urbana. And so representing Silverwood despite the new residents, which I do want to let you guys know, Aspen Courts is absolutely everything that it was supposed to be so far. So great job. I know they're working hard over here still, but it is definitely a nice, safe place for the kids now. So with that said, for Silverwood, I have been over there a couple of times this week and things still seem to be fairly quiet. Right before I left, there was a little bit of commotion last week, but everything that I'm being told is for now, thankfully. So what we're going to be doing going forward for next week, as you know, you received in, we have a prayer walk and prayer vigil scheduled for Monday evening. That is by invitation, so just because we're trying to keep the numbers, obviously walking very low so that we can maintain the social distancing, wearing masks. So if you've been invited, you'll be getting a follow-up email beforehand from me. If not, what we are asking people to do throughout the city of Urbana is join us in prayer on Monday evening, the 17th, from 5:30 to 6:30, specifically for Silverwood and the rest of Urbana where we're having these, these issues with the, the poor communities and the violence and the crime that kind of goes along with that. So you know, if you want to pray inside your home, if you're in Silverwood, please feel free to come outside. So as we're walking, you know, it'd be great to have that support. So we will be doing that. We will also be doing another food distribution next Saturday. This month, we are not going to bag food. Instead, the Rotary Club is donating 180 gift cards from McDonald's for the family. So we will be handing those out this month instead. And we will not be doing steer place just because of my schedule. So blame me, I, I need to get the house unpacked and get my children set up for school. So and then starting in September, we will go back to the normal buying food, bagging food thing and steer place and everything. So if you would like to join us on Saturday morning to help distribute the food to Silverwood, we meet at Quest Church at 10:30 on Saturday morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Austin Hoffman.
Can you hear me?
Can you speak up, Austin?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Barely. Go ahead and we'll try.
Is that, is that better?
Yeah, that's a little better. Go ahead.
All right. My name is Austin Hoffman. I'm an Urbana resident in Ward 5. First off, I just wanted to answer Chief Sarafin's million-dollar question, which is that American policing is racist. That is why the number is so high. Urbana police are racist. Every statistic that you have produced, from traffic stops to pedestrian stops to juvenile arrests, reflects that fact. The handling of the Aliyah Lewis case reflects that. And to be crystal clear, the problem certainly is not in the black community. It is not in our communities at all. It is with the police department in this city. Chief Sarafin is in fact right, that a multitude of factors contribute to these horrific numbers, from housing to education to joblessness to lack of mental health and social services. And the police exacerbate these structural inequalities in this exploitative capitalist society. In fact, the police make sure that this system reproduces itself, that business as usual can go on, that oppressed people, black, brown, indigenous, queer, trans, and working-class people, don't get too bold, don't threaten the status quo, and don't get the justice they deserve. This is what we are seeing across American city streets, including here in Urbana. Police deal with the fallout of these social problems and they make, they make them worse by getting children caught up in this system, many of whom will be burdened with these charges for the rest of their lives and further contributing to the largest prison population on the planet here in the United States. With the rest of my time, I'd like to remind you of an important date. Six years ago, last Sunday, August 9th, 2014, Michael Brown was killed in Ferguson, Missouri by Officer Darren Wilson. He was 18 years old. Wilson used the tried and true "I feared for my life" defense to justify the six bullets he put into his unarmed body. After he was murdered, his body was left bleeding in the street for over four hours on Camfield Drive. The uprising that followed led to calls for police reform, the institution of President Obama's 21st Century Task Force on Policing, and a DOJ investigation into the city of Ferguson, which showed a pattern of discriminatory targeting of black motorists that issued them heavy fines and citations during traffic stops as a means to fund Ferguson's city budget. And this part should sound familiar to you all, as the Urbana police have engaged in very similar practices as the numbers show. In the past six years, despite all these reforms, many of which you all champion, nothing has changed about American policing. And I'll just share some numbers with you from the Washington Post database on police killings from 2015 to 2019. Police kill just under 1,000 people each year. 994 in 2015, 962 in 2016, 986 in 2017, 990 in 2018, 999 in 2019. In 2020, there's already been 574. That's 5,505 total, if you're keeping count at home. This is the equivalent of almost two 9/11s. And that was going to continue unless you do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Meg McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alrighty. Dear Mayor Marlin and the city council, my name is Meg McDonald. I'm from Ward 5. Wish we would get our five minutes, as Chris Hansen said earlier, just some extra comments from what I've heard just today. Why does Eric Jacobson and company get 20-plus minutes to talk about the impact of UIUC reopening? Testing is more important than social distancing, he's quoted saying. Okay, so how is Urbana going to test the people who don't have access to testing on campus or by vehicle? And the U of I testing is on campus. People will have to go there regardless if they can work or learn remotely. There are classes that are required for people's degrees that only have in-person instruction. They are still required to come on campus twice a week to get tested. People will be vulnerable, people will die. There's no right answer, but what is, what is your place in this? What can you do? You prioritize and amplify the importance in emergency state of COVID-19, but you drag your feet on everything else I'm about to talk about. I know where we could get money to ensure testing for everyone in Urbana, the overstuffed police budget. Okay, so another week has passed by and the city of Urbana has done nothing as far as anti-racism work goes. There are discussions of budget ordinances relating to this new full-time position for the civilian police review board, which is broken and proven not to work and we don't want it. In case anyone didn't know, police review boards and body cams do not stop police violence. There are discussions about what to do with the police budget money for overtime training that wasn't fulfilled. Where's the discussion about reallocating police funds to make sure that every Urbana student and teacher has access to internet tablets, to the books and supplies that will be needed, not just this year, but every year? Where is this open door program that is being touted as a solution for police not being qualified for mental health crises? What advisory committee are you talking about? Where is it? What is it? You're spending time explaining away FOIA obtained information on juvenile arrest data and letting cops explain how cops should be in schools. So which one is it? The FOIA data is wrong and that's why you believe cops in schools are good? Or is it that the FOIA data is right and you just want to find a way to reframe it so you can keep cops in schools? I don't see you pushing for SROs being taken out of schools with the exception from a comment here or there from Dennis or Jared. We literally throw 54% of youth in the juvenile detention center, you know, kid jail. 89% of them are black. And can we just spend just as much time presenting how the school-to-prison pipeline is real? You let the chief present this issue as a community kids issue. No, it's an issue with the violence and the profiling and the internalized racism and white supremacy of the police department. Applicably enough, you don't address the Aliyah Lewis case because you can't. You push for the renewal of Chief Sarafin's contract because he's always been a good guy to you. Within hours of chalking outside the courthouse for Aliyah's second pre-trial hearing, the peaceful and loving messages of support were washed off. Why are you so afraid of the people's demands? Because they threaten your power, your status, and the very protected and projected idea that the police keep people safe? At this point, I'm calling for Mayor Marlin's resignation, her persistence in pushing the civilian police review board and maintaining the status quo, and picking someone else over the more committed anti-racist candidate, which, you know, actually Julie, thank you for your comment today. That was great. Sorry, Mayor Marlin interrupted you. She's interrupted many women over last month and I guess Jared now. So resign. It's been four months since Aliyah was arrested. Thanks.
Next up is Nancy Westcott. Nancy, you're on mute.
Hi, my name is Nancy Westcott. I guess I just have to say that I don't expect government to fix things on a dime and I appreciate that you were listening to everyone who's been speaking. And I am sure that with all the things that you are dealing with, you are doing the very best that you can. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Marie Esposito.
Hi, my name is Anne Marie Esposito and I am a resident of Urbana. I would just like to say how utterly disgusted I am by the percentages shown today. I'm not surprised necessarily, but I would like to point out that this problem is not a new problem and has certainly not differed from the past. And to continue to think that the same sorts of solutions to these problems will be enough to change is just false because this number, to my knowledge and my understanding of the history of America has not changed. And so we need to think of some new ideas of how to solve this problem. And it probably doesn't start with expanding the systems we already have, but starts with creating new systems and new ways of doing things that we haven't done before. And that seems really scary to do something like policing, not in the way that we've done it for the entirety of American history, but it's the only way that we're going to have real change in this city and across the world. And I also do not appreciate that anytime issues are brought up about the city of Urbana, that it is expanded to the whole United States, as if to say, it's a problem here, but it's a problem everywhere. And so it's not really on us to fix because everywhere else has the same issue. But then also to say the same, that when we try to talk about a problem here, they say, well, it's worse elsewhere, so you should be grateful. I think that we should take the problems in our community very seriously and treat them as our problem to solve and not wait for someone else to do it, because if we wait forever, no one will fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. La Casa. 1974. You're on mute. Jason, can we unmute?
I've allowed them to talk. What La Casa 1974, what you'll need to do in the lower left-hand corner is unmute your microphone and then you'll be able to talk. I've asked you to unmute here.
Let's, let's move on and then we'll come back to La Casa. Allison O'Dwyer.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm here tonight to urge caution to, this evening, to Mayor Marlin and to Chief Sarafin and your conversations correcting recently supplied FOIA data on the enormity of black youth arrests here in Urbana. As a former Urbana high school teacher, I watched in dismay this past fall as you both found ways to advocate for the quadrupling of armed police officers in Urbana schools. More specifically, I watched you both continue to use anecdotal evidence to dismiss the very real school-to-prison pipeline. Be sure that you are not using your position of power and privilege to keep racist policy in power. These juvenile arrest data are exactly the data that need to come to light in order to build the meaningful anti-racist resolutions that our city needs. When the ratios of black to white youth arrests reveal such a cavernous disparity between the two, I would expect the city to be forming more study sessions to learn about how systemic racism and racist policies work to enforce this treatment of black youth. I also would have expected the city to put this data forth I also would have expected the city to put this data forth itself, not through a requested FOIA document. Instead, the immediate reaction of the mayor and the chief of police tonight was to set aside valuable council time to defend their position, not to defend the black youth. I see my city working hard to rework this data to make it only slightly more palatable. When I hear your knee-jerk focus on double-counted arrests this evening, I hear you showing your reluctance to come to this table meaningfully. I hear you protecting racist policy. I encourage you to think back to when you both participated side by side in the large Black Lives Matter march through Urbana this summer. What was your purpose for being there that afternoon? How are you working tonight to address these issues in your community brought to you that day and tonight as well? Are you asking meaningful questions? Why are the vast majority of these black kids arrested during the school day at times when they should be in school? Why do these black youth arrests go down over holidays? How many students were suspended out of school on days that they were arrested? How many kids who are referred to the YAC program then go on to juvenile detention? City Council, what will your next steps be with this data? Will you use the time spent tonight reinterpreting this data to eschew it? Or will you want to learn from it and act on it as your citizens here tonight are asking you to do?
Thank you. Next is Grace Wilken.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, my name is Grace Wilken, and I am contacting you as a deeply concerned member of the community. At the last city council meeting, Police Chief Bryant Seraphin gave a staff report in which he told the quote-unquote "other side of the story" to what happened on June 23rd at a protest. I was at this event when the incident occurred and found Chief Seraphin's telling the story to be inaccurate, biased, and dangerous. He gave a very empathetic version of the driver's story, saying that she was leaving the hospital, that she wasn't going very fast, et cetera. He did not have any empathy for the protesters who had been marching peacefully in the heat for hours in masks to fight for their lives and liberties. This shows where he is and is not able to empathize. It shows who he sees with humanity and who he does not extend that humanity towards. Besides the biased telling of the story, I questioned accuracy as well. Seraphin said that protesters were jumping on the driver's car. As a witness to the incident before and after police arrival, I did not see anyone jump on the driver's car at any time. People were knocking on her hood as she was driving into people in defense. I saw the woman, the driver, and her car as she was attempting to flee the scene of the accident, and did not see any physical damage to her or her car. This story is dangerous because it suggests that the driver was justified in hitting the protesters. He also said that police talked to both victims. While I hope this is true, I did not see it. I was walking away with one of the victims and did not see police talk to her. I don't know if this was a third victim that they didn't know about or what. I wish that I had footage of the event, as it was an emotionally intense situation filled with commotion, but unfortunately, I did not record it. I'm waiting the information requested under FOIA, and will be following up in future meetings. I think this is something that needs to be looked into further. If Seraphin's telling of the story were accurate, it's still very biased and did not make it clear that this behavior is not tolerated. By not taking this seriously while at the same time overly policing and prosecuting people of color in our community, you're condoning more violence in our community. The police department, Police Chief, and City Council did not make it clear that this action is illegal and will have consequences. The chairman, Jared Miller, had to ask for clarification on Seraphin's message on the issue and ask, quote, "Are people allowed to drive through protesters in the street?" To which Seraphin replied, quote, "No, we don't want people driving over protesters. We also don't want protesters jumping on hoods of cars," end quote. This suggests to me that the chief of police is putting these things in the same category and inconsistently enforcing the law. By not properly addressing this issue in Urbana, you are encouraging people to continue to do it with no fear of consequences. This is dangerous and can lead to further violence and someone being murdered in our streets with your permission. Sure enough, it has happened again, when a driver hit a protester in Champaign. Again, this driver made an assault with a deadly weapon while intentionally driving through a group of protesters and fled the scene of the crime with no consequences. I know this is not your jurisdiction, but it's still our community. I can't imagine things happening the same way if this were a different situation. This woman who was driving the car was upset and yelling, but for some reason, police did not tackle her to the ground, punch her, kick her, arrest her, and press charges against her as they did with Aliyah Lewis.
Thank you. We'll try Alaska La Casa 1974 again.
Yeah, tell them I got the show.
Would you like to speak to City Council?
I think, yeah, they said they were at the courthouse.
Roll them, shut them down.
Justin Michael Hendricks.
Hello? Hello, my name is Justin Michael Hendricks. I'm a Parkland student, state advocate, and creative homo as a new homeboy living in Champaign, Urbana. The purpose of the media is to report information and give the masses of narrative that can change, control one's mind. With that being said, we understand the recent article that was released by the News Gazette. Nonetheless, let's make it clear, what we won't do, Mary, is release information such as additional charges against a black woman who was manhandled and dog piled on by a group of ill-trained officers in order to cause the public eye and community to lose sight of what we have spoken against, police brutality. What you're doing is no different than when Bush used the Willie Horton ad against Andy Dukakis to win the presidency. Don't know it, Google it. We know your seat is up this coming spring. You want to write about and express frustrations on chalk, bad fashions, and the fear of losing SROs, but yet have you released any priors on the officers that were involved? Or where were you in the plan to enter in the community for engagement, civic engagement at that? Do you have SROs at uni high at the same rate as Urbana High School? Better yet, have you met with Aliyah Lewis or asked her how she's doing mentally or physically or more? I'll wait. In closing, is still to fund the police, Diane, our community needs those coins, sis. Drop the charges and charge those cops, and come to the hood and do better. CCR has 10 demands, make sure you know them, and I thank you.
Thank you. Julia Rush.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, so I'm Julia Rush, a teacher in Urbana, and looking at the data that was just presented on juvenile arrests, specifically for our black youth, is absolutely disgusting. All I can picture is my little fourth graders growing up just to be discriminated against by the police in their own town. And then, as they move to higher grades, they have to see cops, SROs, in their schools. That does not make students feel safe. For example, in the conversation about what to do when being abused, the loudest voices in my classroom were begging me to never tell the police because they are scared of them. The fact that we are even discussing putting police in our schools is appalling. Right now, I'm seeing my families and students struggle to get basic things for schools, such as internet and learning materials. Why would you even think to choose funding police over our community's children? Free Aliyah Lewis, defund our police, and get cops out of our schools. Thank you.
Oh, this is the Independent Media Center.
Allison?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Great. So I am playing on behalf of the Urbana, Champaign-Urbana Community Resiliency Cooperative. So, dear Urbana City Council, we're contacting you as a group of concerned members of the Champaign-Urbana community. We are the CRC, a study group with over 80 members dedicated to building the skills that we need to support each other during uncertain times. We understand that when institutional racism manifests itself in our local government, we're all impacted, and our community as a whole suffers. We therefore want to reach out and say that we believe that your decisions have a deep impact on us and the people we love. As such, we ask that you listen to public and personal input with an open mind. We ask that you contact Julia Rietz and request that she drop the charges against Aliyah Lewis. The incident that happened April 10th demonstrates an alarming misuse of force by police against an unarmed civilian. At worst, it shows police brutality rooted in racism, and at best, it shows a misunderstanding that could have been handled very differently. Either way, Ms. Lewis doesn't deserve to suffer lifelong consequences from that incident. Dropping the charges against Ms. Lewis is a small step towards her healing and towards healing our community. And there's no excuse for the police brutality and excessive use of force shown, even if a citizen is being quote-unquote "difficult." By ignoring these repeated requests, you're hurting our community and allowing police brutality to continue without your permission. We also request that you drop charges against the 27 people arrested over Memorial Day weekend in relation to the protests. It's predatory to arrest these young people with seemingly little weak or no evidence and then set unusually high bail prices. These people, like Ms. Lewis, do not deserve to suffer lifelong consequences from this incident. By criminalizing people, you are creating criminals. You sentence young people to a lifetime of challenges and discrimination that come with a criminal record because of these events. At the same time, a driver has hit protesters with a car, a deadly weapon, and fled or attempted to flee the scene of the accident twice now in Champaign County with no consequences. This is unjust justice, and we are watching your decisions. If you want to help and protect our community, you must listen to public input and make compassionate choices that work towards healing and unity in our community. Please take the necessary steps to protect our community members and hold yourselves. The city and the police responsible for their actions. Sincerely, the CU CRC. And with my remaining time, I'd also urge all of you who are talking about the criminalization of children and arrests, especially of black children, to use the word "children" and not "juveniles." I know that may be the official term, but it obscures really how horrific it is to take, again, children and put them into the criminal justice system. I'm speaking specifically to you, Chief Seraphin. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that's all we have for public input. I did want to acknowledge that we received emails from the following people: Laura Jobe, Zachary Wilkins, Sarah Hoag, Chelsea Birchmeier, Rebecca Powell, Karen Linder, Corinne Carmazanas, Nate Wall, Kat Fuentes, Naomi Paek, Janice Walker, Danielle McFarland, Debbie Sperry, River Brown, and Matt Soy and Nancy Dietrich. And these emails will be entered into the meeting record. Before we go on to unfinished business, I just want to remind people that next door, August, or next Monday, August 17th, the One Door presentation will be made. That is the proposed alternative emergency response for mental health calls for service to the police. So it's going to be done by Lieutenant Sanders and perhaps some other people involved with the proposal. But anyway, that'll be next Monday. And then the following Monday, August 24th, Hillard Hines will be providing their report to council, and that is a report on their review of the Aliyah Lewis incident. So that will be Monday, August 24th. Yes.
There's one other person who raised her hand while you were reading off names. Rita?
Oh, Rita. Okay, go ahead, Rita, and that'll be it for tonight.
I'd actually like to request that you review whose hands are up, because we're actually sitting in a room, and Drake should have his hand up too. It's been lowered on several occasions. I don't know if you're preventing the citizens from speaking, but there are other hands that should be up, Mayor.
I'm not seeing them, I'm sorry.
Well, if you allow me my three minutes, I'm more than happy to pass him my phone, and he can get his three minutes here.
Okay.
Let me know how you'd like to deal with that.
Go ahead, please.
Okay. My name is Rita Connerly. I'm a citizen of Champaign County, Champaign specifically. I actually work in Urbana. What I'm hearing tonight is pretty clear that the citizens believe there is a problem here in Urbana. What we have heard is that the Urbana cops are racist, they contribute to the violence and not the de-escalation practices of serving and protecting the citizens that pay them. Many black and indigenous people of color and other allies have expressed their concerns with our government and the discriminatory practices that the police are doing in our city. Has Seraphin ever wondered that he and the cops might be a problem? Diane, have you considered that you also too contribute to the problem with your biased feelings as it relates to this police chief? CCR demands, get to know what they are. We, the people, want a people's-first approach. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Please reconsider looking at whose hands are raised and allow Drake Mater to speak as well. Have a great evening.
Thank you. I don't see Drake. Is Drake here?
I think Drake is the La Casa 1974. They're the ones that keep raising and lowering their hand.
Okay, he already spoke, oh.
I think we gave him a chance, and they coughed and said something, and then Jared had me mute them. Do you want me to try to unmute them again?
Let's go to, I'm seeing two more hands. Let's go to Bo David Barber.
Hi, can y'all hear me? To clarify, yeah, also, the La Casa was Drake. I can understand some confusion if you thought he was trolling, but he was just coughing. So give him his time, please. Additionally, I don't think we're at 20 people so far, so why are we still doing three minutes? That's just something you can answer after my time is done, though. Don't interrupt me, please. I have a couple of things I kind of just wondered about. I mean, just, you know, a lot of people already addressed this, but, you know, Seraphin asked the $10 million question for why, why is there more black youth that's arrested? You know, he talks about jobs, talks about poverty and stuff like that. It's like poverty is a contributing factor, but have you ever considered that maybe you're the problem? I mean, we had two Urbana teachers come on tonight calling y'all out about this, about the SROs. And I think that's just kind of indicative about how police in this situation are only escalating the problems that they see, that they see, and are just like, well, we don't know how that happens. I think we all have a pretty clear picture of how that happens. I just, I'm just kind of confounded that you didn't come here with all the, you know, if you're gonna come here and present stuff to Seraphin, you need to come with all the receipts. I just, I understand, you know, as someone who's, as someone who works with days themselves, you know, it's tough to have everything on hand, but, you know, this is your job. But I yield any of my time. I'd say, you know, we have less than 20 people, you should give Drake, who's La Casa, you should give him five minutes. Also, shout out to you, Mayor Marlin, for not interrupting Meg McDonald at least once today. I appreciate that, and I hope that continues in the future. Thank you.
All right, let's try La Casa again.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hello, everyone, my name is Drake. My father, I apologize, my name was popped up before, but, you know, the technology is new to me. But I am a member of Black Students for Revolution on the campus of University of Illinois. And to answer the question that Seraphin put forth, one, policing, policing is racist. That's from the jump. They came, started from the slave patrols, which was inherently, which was part of an inherently racist system. So policing is inherently racist. Police do not stop crime. Police have not even stopped school shootings either, especially after they started to increase the funding for policing in schools after Columbine. Police have done nothing but attribute to, contribute to the school-to-prison pipeline. Now, we can say poverty, and we can say other facets, they're all connected, something called intersectionality. Because oppression, because people are connected with their identities, oppression is connected as well. So let's talk about education. These children, black children, are taught a Eurocentric, colorblind, apolitical education. That is an issue. These children need to have a political education. Give us that job. We will do that for you, since you all have shown that you all are not able to put forth a curriculum that can actively critique the status of racism, the status quo. That is what we need. Now, to continue on the school-to-prison pipeline, many prisoners are illiterate. This is from a documentary that I would love for you all to watch, Elementary Genocide. There are multiple parts. That is a connection to the miseducation of young black children. Again, connection to the miseducation of young black children. Also, the forms of discipline in schooling mirror the discipline within prisons. Schools- Schools have been defunded, and these schools look exactly like the prisons that they are trying to push them into. Police have not done anything to stop fighting in schools, have done nothing to stop crime on the streets. So we ask for you to defund the police. Police are only here to protect capital and ensure capitalism thrives. So officers in schools helping push students into prison, the new form of slavery. That is your job, and we are here to say that that should not be your job. So we ask that if you don't even want to remove the SROs, we ask that you start to create a new system that we can move and transfer the power from police over to the people. Let's get some counselors in there with mental health and actually de-escalate the police officers as well, not just de-escalating the fighting that goes on within the schools, which is created by the conditions created by racism. So let's go there. So it's not that the kids are just mad. There is...there are conditions created by y'all. So I just want to say there's no such thing as a culture of poverty. If there is such thing as culture of poverty, who created that poverty? Who created these communities and defunded them, disenfranchised us politically? Diane is up. Urbana City Council is up for March. Y'all vote.
Thank you. And our last speaker will be Philippe Meninto, and then we do need to move on to business of the rest of the agenda.
Okay, now I should be unmuted. I hope you can hear me well.
Yes.
Perfect. So I...this has not been a good year. This has been a year full of stress, and we have not seen the best of Urbana. I have to tell you that I'm very disappointed of everything that I've heard tonight. I'm disappointed of my adopted town, and I'm a little bit heartbroken for what I'm seeing. But I think that this is also the time to speak up and hopefully take some action. You have her resident after resident telling you the changes that they want. They tell you that we don't need SROs. By the way, kids have been in school since March, and all of the students are going to keep staying at home at least until next year. So I wonder if you plan of providing some kind of partial refund of the $327,000 for the SROs. So, you know, the residents have spoken. They're telling you what they need, but it's very sad to see no action. Actually, it's even sadder to see the reaction on how Mayor Marlin and Chief Seraphin have decided to spend over an hour to show us data after a citizen out of her own time decided to FOIA, excessively FOIA, to provide light on what's happening. And only after that, you have decided to re-show us your statistics, and I wonder why? I wonder if the effort was to tell us that Urbana is safer, or that Urbana is not that violent, or that we don't need to be afraid of Black youth? I really wonder what the effort is behind all of this. It really disappoints me. I hope that, you know, Urbana is a progressive town, and I think that we should be doing better. We should be really trying to work on policies and not reacting to try to make us look good, to try to appease, I wonder, try to appease a fraction of our community, of the white community, so they, as we're already doing, putting SROs to protect white kids, if that's actually what is the effort behind the city. I don't think that we're working the data to make it more palatable is really what we need to do. I think that...I hope that the council and the city decides to do what the people are asking you to do, what they've been asking you to do for months. It is your job. It is not our job. We're here to help you. We hope that you listen, and we hope that you take the actions that we're really asking you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. First item under that is ordinance number 2020-07-038, which is an ordinance approving an amendment to the 2005 Comprehensive Plan. That's the pedestrian master plan, Plan Case 2401 CP20. Is that Lily presenting tonight?
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you so much. I'm Lily Wilcock. I'm a planner here in community development. Happy birthday, Mary Alice Wu. Just wanted to provide a really quick update. You got a really brief staff report, and I wanted to let everybody know that there's a much more detailed staff report on the July 20th committee of the whole meeting. And also, at that meeting, Gabe Lewis from Regional Plan Commission made a presentation on the Urbana Pedestrian Master Plan. The Urbana Pedestrian Master Plan was hired out by Public Works in 2017, and it was met many times with BPEC, our Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission. Some of the details you can find online on our city's homepage, and you can find that on our homepage, under Recent Posts, you can also download the full plan and its appendices right there, and your link is also in the staff report. So besides that background information, there have been two pages that have changed since the July 20th meeting. The first page was a recommendation, an engineering recommendation in the plan on brick sidewalks. The second was a brief, two sentences or three sentences added to page 147. It's in the Funding section of Implementation. Those were in the exhibit for that brief staff report for today. And just to summarize, staff and council member Dennis Roberts and councilperson Mary Alice Wu, they worked to remove the specific recommendation based on public input and instead mentioned the public input and also continued to invite a future conversation about brick sidewalk maintenance, accessibility, and preservation. So that was the changes in brief that happened, and you can see those in your staff report.
Any questions for Lily? Bill?
Yeah, I know that I missed the meeting where there was a lot of discussion on the brick sidewalk recommendation. The way I remember that, though, was it was a recommendation that was specific to just the ones that had been designated with black lines on the map that were...that are currently replaced with brick unless petition for concrete. Is that where it is?
Yeah, yeah, that's the correct...
Was to reverse, to replace it with concrete unless petitioned for brick by the property owners, right? So it was to reverse that, and I understand the recommendation. There was discussion about it at BPEC. I mean, there were people that, you know, that don't feel that brick sidewalks are that much of an impediment. I think there was a lot of discussion about the accessibility issue and the fact, the maintenance issue and things like that. You know, in reality, the recommendations in the pedestrian plan isn't what we go by. It's the ordinance. So unless we bring ordinance forward and vote on that and pass it, nothing's going to change. I understand, you know, why engineering would prefer to have that to be the default, the concrete, and it would be...I mean, it would be better for accessibility, be less expensive. There was a letter that went around to council earlier, I think today or yesterday, that we didn't budget any money for brick sidewalk maintenance. I asked Carol if she could find those numbers. I did a little bit. It looked like we've been budgeting $50,000 or $75,000 a year. I don't think we've been spending quite that much. Did you get a chance to look at that, Carol?
Yes, I did. So what I found was that since 2009, we've had two dedicated projects for brick sidewalks. One was in 2017, and one was in 2018, and that was a total of $174,600. And then during that same timeframe, one in 2017 and one in 2019, we had two concrete sidewalk repair projects, and the total spent there was $211,200 roughly. I would just add another interesting piece of information to this conversation based on those contracts for the brick sidewalk repair projects for the paving itself, so the bricks itself. In 2017, that was $22 per square foot, and 2018, it was $22.50 per square foot. By contrast, for the concrete, the six-inch concrete was $11.30 per square foot. Eight-inch concrete was $13.45 per square foot. Prices were better in 2019. The six-inch concrete was $9 a square foot, and the eight-inch concrete was $14 a square foot. So to do, you know, the same unit price or the same unit, concrete's about half the price of brick.
So I think we have about 10 miles of brick sidewalks in the city. Do you know how many miles of concrete sidewalks we have?
I don't know.
I've said this many times, but it sounds like we've spent about the same amount on maintenance for both concrete and brick over the past few years, a little bit more for concrete, maybe.
Right.
So, I mean, I think the problem with the brick policy really is, is just, I mean, I can imagine why, but it looks like it was put together by committee with a lot of different categories and kind of scattered around. I don't really understand how it works when it comes down to voting on it, or, you know, certainly each property owner, you can't have a property with brick and then a property with concrete and a property with brick. I guess, do you vote on, like, the whole length along the block? Is that how that works? Lily, do you remember?
That conversation...are you talking about how they got the assigned color coordination?
Well, that, you know, I can imagine that there was a lot of debate, and that was some kind of compromise and mapping out and everything. But when it comes down to, say, that one on just north of Green on Anderson, I think, that was done recently, our ordinance says the adjacent property owners get to weigh in on it, basically, but you can't do it property by property. Presumably, whatever the stretch is along the whole block is going to be consistent. It's either going to be brick or concrete, right?
Yeah, it's a really good question. I don't know if that is much more dependent on how we're going to...how we decide to take on a sidewalk project.
Yeah. Okay, well, this is probably...this whole conversation is a little bit more than what we can put in the pedestrian master plan. I think, you know, it's a 500-page document. It had a lot of work in it, a lot of priorities. I really don't see BPEC making it a priority to get grant funding for maintenance of brick sidewalks. If we're going to spend time on getting grant funding, I think we're going to spend the time to try to get new connectivity with...and, you know, there's a whole list of projects that need to be done. There's a lot of parts of the community that aren't well-connected for people walking that really need to be, and we've made equity a pillar of this plan. So I think putting that in there may be wishful, but it's not very realistic.
Are there technical questions? And then we'll need a motion to get this on the table for discussion. So any questions for Lily or Carol? Dennis?
So Carol, my information about the funding for brick sidewalks and projects was based on the COATS plan that came out in 2016. They defined what the projects were, so I'm not aware of the projects you're talking about for 2017 or 2018. What streets of brick sidewalks were affected?
I don't have that level of detail. I just had the final pay estimates that showed the totals and the breakdown of the costs. I don't have the areas that were impacted.
Yeah, I kind of wished I had watched that and asked you earlier, because certainly I didn't see any happening in my neighborhood, so I wasn't aware that there was brick restoration. And you know whether a section was relayed or with a fixing, like, you know, five-foot-long sections of a brick pavement? Do you know that?
I don't know, but based on the price, it sounds like they were laying new brick.
Okay, well, that's really what they should be doing. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, will someone make a motion, then?
Certainly, I'll make a motion that we...I see we're in the council. This has come back to us, so that we adopt the 2010 Urbana Pedestrian Master Plan as presented today by city staff. With a certain number of changes to the pages 124 and 147, as shown on the...and shows on the memo that was passed out today by Lily.
So you're moving the ordinance? Just to be clear? Okay. 2020-07-038. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Mary Alice?
I just want to reiterate what I had said earlier, which is that this took tremendous amount of participation from the community, from different advisory boards, from the lead organization on this. It's countless hours spent on this. I think it's an excellent plan. I understand that the concerns that some people have raised about brick sidewalks, and I just want to kind of reiterate a couple of things. The first thing is that Dennis really did a lot of background work, talked with the Plan Commission and the engineering group to make sure that it accurately reflected, hopefully, the desire of the pedestrian plan originally, but it also fleshed out a little bit in terms of how we would seek to change that ordinance if it should be changed. So the additional information on page 124 basically talks a bit about that in depthly. So I understand what Bill is saying in terms of BPEC's priorities and where they would look for grant funding. I would expect the Historic Reservation Commission to do more of that heavy lifting if they so choose, and the Bike Pedestrian Advisory only if they have time. That's my own personal wish. I guess I will say that, but I'm satisfied with the changes that everybody's worked so hard to make to this.
Dennis?
Yeah, I appreciate those comments. Yeah, I'm really very pleased with, I think it's like wonderful to have the first master plan concerning pedestrian activity in the community. It addresses ADA requirements at crosswalks. It talks about safe routes to school. It talks about the need for, you know, accessibility routes, and, you know, we talk about, you know, surface safety. You know, there are a couple of things that are really kind of just due to nature and the situation of the sidewalk. You know, we appreciate our cement slab sidewalks, but I know three people who have been injured, including myself, from raised slabs. And I know that I walk on Illinois Street all the time and around the 700 block east Illinois, there's a slab that's probably raised four inches on both sides, and it's probably because a tree root has raised the slab. And right now, and for the last year, maybe more, there's been a bunch of asphalt putted up against the crack to make kind of a beveled ramp to it, but there hasn't been any correction to the main project problem that's on that sidewalk. And I've seen numerous problems with cement sidewalks across town. And naturally, you know, we want to be able to be fixing our sidewalks because, as the pedestrian plan points out, not only mobility, but public safety is a concern, and upheaved edges of the cement sidewalks are a concern. People, you know, complain about those sometimes to me. And also the brick sidewalks, and the bricks have had a lot less maintenance over the years. A lot of them were laid before the turn of the century. So if the city really is concerned about pedestrian safety, there should be a dedication to address upraised and upheaved elements in our sidewalks, whether they be brick... upraised and upheaved elements in our sidewalks, whether they be brick or cement. So, you know, as far as like snow removal, uh, people don't shovel their walks very often unless they're really good citizens. We have kind of like a, an angel, uh, you know, be an angel and shovel your sidewalk. The only place that we require it absolutely is the downtown business district, which recently got expanded, so that's fine, that's good for the community. But on any route to any, any part of town, if you're coming from the residential areas, probably a third of the sidewalks will get shoveled, doesn't matter what the surface is. You know, you're still ending up walking in the street 90% of the time because of ice and snow that after a snowfall. So if we're going to talk about public safety, if that's a concern for BPAC, let's address it by making funds available for fixing both kinds of sidewalks, uh, which I think is addressed with the new information, the new text in the revised document that we're considering passing today. And I, I really encourage BPAC not to be passive, but to be somewhat more responsible in the community. Bill, you've just said that, um, it's a more of, it's more important to BPAC to put in new sidewalks to create connectivity that are missing links between sidewalk paths. And I'm wondering how that, how that balances out to fixing the many, many sidewalks, whatever their substance of, of surfaces are in the community. I would think that, that one of the goals of BPAC would be to find outside funding, if the city doesn't have any, to, um, to use its grant searching ability, which we know is rather phenomenal. And really pretty much the only, only city organization that can do that for us, to find funding for the brick sidewalks because they're part of the historic and, and, uh, and, and built structure of our community. And I'm sure that even CDBG funding could be found to do some sidewalk work. Secondly, I think the city should institute a program that allows individuals or, or community groups to work on a sidewalk stretch in their neighborhood as a volunteer project under supervision of somebody from the city. And the city supply the bricks because we know that we have storehouse of bricks out there, um, in the city storage lot, uh, you know, near the expressway that could easily be used to replace and relay some brick. And all the city would need to do is give a little direction, lay, provide the subsurface granite or gravel and then the sand, and then, you know, come back and check the process as the participants are doing it. I think that'd be a great community project that, that some neighborhoods could get behind as a project. And lastly, um, I want to just quote a letter that I got this afternoon from, from, um, if you can find the letter. Oh yeah, from, um, Mary Pat McGuire. She's a, uh, an associate instructor in landscape architecture at the University of Illinois. She, and she just, she, she understands the need for some consideration for historic preservation. And she says, "I continue to shake my head when I read the rhetoric about special interest groups and small constituency, uh, about preservation issues. Preservation may be, may be by a local, a local minority, but it is not for the minority. It is made in the interest and the integrity of the neighborhood, the city, and its many values, which include economic. Historical integrity and memory are eroding under the umbrella of improvement language, like what's cheaper. Nobody realizes that they, what they have until it is gone. Historic materials and structures are not to be taken for granted. Debates about alternatives. People are not supposed to ride their bikes on sidewalks, but first link, the first link in an article on sidewalk vibration for wheelchairs. The biggest issue for Urbana is its deferred maintenance. This goes for housing too. Many of the historic homes that are on, are celebrated in our community are deteriorating due to lack of maintenance." So, so she provided some links for the city council to look at concerning, uh, you know, really the importance of historic maintenance, not only of our building infrastructure, housing, but also for the sidewalks, because it's our history. And we don't necessarily have to like preserve it, you know, like, um, like in, with insanity, but if we don't acknowledge it and celebrate it, there will be nothing left of the community that we all grew up in or we used to know. And we'll all, we'll all look like strip malls or, um, maybe we'll, maybe Urbana will turn into the 17-story high-rise metropolis that we see in downtown campus town. And if that's the value of the community, well, there, you know, it's going to go that way. But, um, I'm just an advocate for considering the importance of our historic nature too. Thanks for being patient.
Any other comments? Bill?
Yeah, I just want to correct a couple of things. I said the priority for grants for BPAC would be, um, making connectivity. Uh, we definitely have a lot of concern over maintenance. There's a whole section in the, um, master plan, sidewalk condition map. We've spent quite a bit of money as a city, um, evaluating the sidewalk condition. You can look at that and get a pretty, um, pretty good view exactly where all the sidewalks are, the red, the red areas that are in really poor shape. There's a lot of them. We need to, um, if, if we're going to take care of the sidewalks, we need to budget money for it. That's our job, um, whether it's concrete or brick, and, and definitely BPAC supports that. We just don't, we, uh, for one thing, ITUP grants are the biggest source of grants, and it specifically says you can't use it for maintenance. So our biggest source of grants can't be used for maintenance. There may be others, but, um, you know, I think maintenance is just something that cities need to do. It's, uh, maybe, you know, maybe there are, um, opportunities for historic preservation or, you know, people with special interests in brick sidewalks to come up with more money or, or get contributions. And also I can, uh, just correct the statement that you aren't supposed to walk, ride your bike on sidewalks. The only place we have that law, that rule is downtown. Um, and especially kids, um, in a lot of areas, it's really dangerous to, for young kids to ride in the streets. So, um, they're encouraged to use sidewalks where, um, where it makes sense. You know, if you're riding fast, sidewalks is not, not a good place to ride. But if you're riding a tricycle or something, right, sidewalks are probably the place you want to be. And, uh, you know, if there's snow, you know, there's all kinds of reasons why you might want to ride, ride, I might ride my bike on the sidewalk. One of them is along Orchard Street because it's brick and the sidewalks are concrete. But that's, uh, you know, that's just an aside. I'm not attacking you on that one. I just wanted to correct that.
That's good.
Any other, any other discussion items? Okay, um, are we ready to vote? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut? Ms. Hersi?
Can you unmute, unmute Charisse?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up, a report of the standing committees. Uh, it was, committee of the hall was chaired by Bill Brown.
Yeah, we, uh, met last week and forwarded several items to city council, all with recommendation for approval. First was, uh, resolution number 2020-08-034. Our resolution approving the Champaign-Urbana solid waste disposal system agreement. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next is resolution number 2020-08-035. Our resolution authorizing acceptance of a grant for Market at the Square Farm Credit Illinois Grant Snap Double Value Program 2020. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Mary Alice. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next is resolution number 2020-08-036. Our resolution approving amendment number one to a sub-grantee agreement for a tenant-based rental assistance program for Courage Connection Tenant-Based Rental Assistance FY 2017-2018, number 1718-CC01. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second that, please.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Next is resolution number 2020-08-037. Our resolution accepting a tornado trees for Tree Town grant from Rotary Club of Urbana. For the committee, I move approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Julie. I did want to respond, there was a question last week about what the value of the 64 trees was that we lost in the tornado. Approximately $141,000. Um, the, the value of the trees were, the trees ranged in value, they averaged about $2,200 per, for each mature tree. Seems low to me actually to value a tree like that, but that's, that's the value placed on that, so roughly $141,000. And those were the trees lost completely, and then, uh, that does not include the damaged. Um, any other discussion? Dennis?
Yeah, this is great. Um, certainly we lost a couple of trees also in town right across the street from the city buildings was one of them, and one of the trees in a private lot on, like about the 400 block of West Green Street came down, uh, during that really heavy incident of rain on Monday night.
Yeah, it's, this has been a-
Things happen still.
This year has been very hard on our urban forest.
Yes, Fairlon Village too.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Along Fairlon too, there were several large-
Oh, yeah, yeah. Tremendous, tremendous loss of limbs. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
And finally, last is ordinance number 2020-08-041. Ordinance revising the annual budget, ordinance budget amendment number one, omnibus. For the committee, I move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Bill Colebrook. Is there discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Laut?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Marlin?
Yes, and because this is a budget amendment, the mayor votes on this issue. That's, uh, thank you, Bill, for that report. Um, reports of special committees. Seeing none tonight. Reports of officers. Carol, did you want to comment on the door, emergency door?
Sure, um, there's, there's a, um, a short memo in the, uh, in the packet. It's for your information only, but we, um, it, the, um, memo explains that we needed to, um, replace at, at least one door on the fire station that's in the city building. And because, um, two additional doors were, um, noted in the facility's condition assessment as being in poor condition, we, we're taking the opportunity to replace doors. And, uh, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but it's a pretty straightforward item.
Any questions for Carol? Okay, alrighty, thank you. Um, I was asked to make an announcement about the census. Um, this is for our internal census committee. We're fast approaching the deadline. Uh, unfortunately, um, the Census Bureau moved up the deadline from October 31st to September 30th recently, so we have an even shorter period to get the, everyone counted in Urbana. Urbana's response rate to date is about 64%. So 64% of the households have responded. Last 10 years ago, at this point in time, our response rate was 76%. So we're way behind. Um, so we need to count everyone who lived in Urbana on April 1st, 2020. The main reason for this, um, significant decline in our response rate is the pandemic. Just about exactly the time when, um, students and faculty staff, everyone associated with the university needed to be counted, the university shut down for in-person learning and thousands and thousands of people left town. So, um, this has impacted Champaign and Urbana especially, um, hard. So some of the lowest responding, uh, areas are in, around campus, but also in North Urbana, and we need to focus on those. Just to remind people, the census is incredibly important. Our congressional senate districts are based on the counts, our, uh, representation in, um, as well as our state and local districts. And it's incredibly is important to our allocation of federal and state tax dollars. Many of different types of, uh, revenue that comes to the city is based on population per capita numbers. So for every person counted in Urbana, we receive about $1,400 a year. Over 10 years, that's $140,000. And this is what pays for the programs and services that, that we depend on and that we want to hold. So I'm urging people, if they haven't completed the census and they have access to the internet at home, go to 2020census.gov. It takes about three minutes, three to five minutes to do this, um, census form and you'll be done. Census workers, uh, another thing that's important to know, these enumerators, the census workers are now going door to door to every household who hasn't responded to the census. So if they come to your door, please open it. They'll stand their masks, they'll stay their distance, but they will help you fill out your census form. And we are going to start to have tables out in the community in various places, hopefully staffed by volunteers, and we're looking at getting a table set up at the Urbana Market at the Square. So we can, um, with Chrome, you know, we'll have Chromebooks and people can do the census right there as well. So, um, that would be a volunteer opportunity for anyone, uh, who wants to help staff those booths as well. But this is incredibly important and we have about six weeks left to get the count. And I want to thank Charisse Hersi. I know she's been making a valiant effort in her, um, ward to, to get the, the count out and, um, every bit helps, but.
Yeah, one thing, Diane?
Yeah.
I just wanted to say too, I want to make an, um, add to this, um, because you know, ever since I got on the city council, I've been saying grocery store, grocery store. In North Urbana, we really need one. And, um, I'm going to say this, um, developers look at population. And they look at what their profit margin might be concerning, um, the, the count of, in a particular area. And I think it's extremely important that, um, and anybody that can hear me say this, that, that is on the third ward, in the third ward, please pass, pass the information, to, because a lot of people just don't think we're still doing the census. That's what I found out when I passed out stuff. They're like, oh, they're still doing this? Yeah, we're still doing it. So it's extremely important that everyone who be counted- So it's extremely important that everyone who be counted, and it's important, not just because of, not just because, I mean, it's very important that we know, we keep our representation, that we can get funds, but it goes for other projects as well, or other, other issues, social, social workers or, and, and, social issues, for us to be able to get federal funding for street repairs, for schools, for all of those things, and it's extremely important. And hello, grocery store. If we want, if we want to, to do more and have more different types of businesses and jobs and job opportunities, we, it's, it's important that we, that we all be counted so that when a developer shows, we've got land aplenty over in this area that a developer could use to put a grocery store, put up a, practically a mall even. And it, it would just be very advantageous for the, the north end, in particularly, if, if we really just buckle down and do that three minutes and fill out that form either online or even on your, at your table, if you've got the paper form and send it in, it's not real difficult. And, and because of the diversity in my ward, I want to make it clear there are no citizenship questions on the census form, none. So it doesn't matter if you are undocumented. We, we do not care. This matters so that everyone that can possibly even think of get, of getting any resources from the city or the state, you will be counted, and we will be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we were talking grocery stores this week. I also, that, that just reminded me, they are still hiring census workers at $20.50 an hour. And it's about 20 hours a week work, so if you're interested in earning a little extra money and standing safely distanced at a doorstep, we can get that information to you.
I saw some out on Cottage Grove this afternoon.
They're out there, yes. Dennis, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was wondering if, if we've talked with the editors of the New Gazette to find out if they're going to have a big, help do a big push in the local newspaper to bring attention to the census again.
We can do that, yeah.
I can't remember, the census form is very small. I can't remember. It's just a single card front and back. But, I mean, it could be that they could actually reproduce that form in the paper and make it a one-page promotion. It would be really helpful in the community, especially once the students come back.
Right, right. Okay, last item of business on our agenda is appointments to boards and commissions, and I wanted to submit two appointments for your consideration to the civilian police review board. The first nominee is Katrina Marie Kendall for a term ending June 30th, 2023. Ms. Kendall holds an MSW from the U of I at Urbana-Champaign in community mental health. She has an emphasis on children and adolescents. She holds training certifications in youth mental health, human trafficking, child welfare license, therapeutic crisis intervention, and others. She's currently employed as an intact family services caseworker for Champaign County. She's a longtime resident of the city of Urbana, has volunteered for the Urbana Park District, Jetty Roads Planning Committee, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Gamma Oops Bon Si Society, and Pilgrim Missionary Baptist Church. The second candidate is Tony Allegretti for a term ending June 30th, 2022. Tony Allegretti holds a BS in network technology from DePaul University in Chicago and a JD from Kent College of Law, Chicago. He served as an assistant public defender in Vermillion County and Champaign County, currently works as a staff attorney for the Student Legal Services at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. He also served in the US Peace Corps in Kenya, West Africa. And Tony and his family have lived in the city of Urbana for the past seven years. And I would like to say that these interviews for the candidates were conducted with myself, Chief Seraphin, and the co-chairs of the CPRB, Mikhail Lugwinski and Ricardo Diaz. And we enter, all four of us interviewed the candidates.
Well, I would move to approve the, move to approve the mayoral appointments for the boards and commissions of civilian police review board Katrina Marie Kendall and Tony Allegretti.
I'll second it.
Who made the second?
Bill Colebrook.
Okay. Any discussion? Jared.
So I just wanted to bring up to council, you know, I think that a lot of times our consideration of appointments is pretty rubber stampish. You know, we get a small explanation about some of the history of the folks who are trying to get on certain boards and commissions. Most of the time, it's pretty self-obvious what people's qualifications are and whether or not they, they, they can get approval to get on to one of those things. I would, however, caution with what we are trying to do with the civilian police review board and the extra scrutiny that it has gone under, that we would try to find a way to have a stronger approval process for these. I personally don't find a lot of reasoning to support either of these appointments based on the paragraphs that were provided on the history for them. And I would like a chance to further vet them, even if that just means that we invite them for a brief interview with council where we can ask a couple of questions and get to know them a little better, know why they're interested in the position, so on and so forth. So as, for the reasons I've just stated, I will not be voting in support of these until we have a chance to further review the appointees. I'd appreciate comments from other council members.
No.
Well, I don't know, Katrina. I've known Tony for probably four or five years as a constituent of mine, and also as someone I'm familiar with through the ACLU, and, and I know that he would be good on this. He, you know, he's former public defender, is very familiar with procedural things and police procedures. He's a strong advocate for, 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 for the poor and for people that have, you know, that have had problems with police or had problems in general with the justice system. So I'm real comfortable voting for him. I don't know Katrina. If, if, if the mayor's interviewed them and CPRB people have interviewed them, I think that's more than we do for most commission members. I'm not opposed for them to come and give statements, but I don't think it would change my vote.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
I do, um, I feel as though I have faith in what Mikhail and Ricardo have in terms of perspective on this, but I do want to reiterate, Jared, your point, I think, is really well taken in terms of knowing how much public interest there are in these things as we move forward to working with the CPRB in terms of updating their orientation and sort of rebooting that as well as civilian oversight for new things. So I do think that it's worth a conversation in terms of, for example, the commission that's going to be set up to look at police policies and things like that, that we wouldn't want to not have a more rigorous vetting system opportunity in that case.
And you will, in that case, yes. I, I can add on these candidates. Katrina is African-American. She lives in a neighborhood that is not often represented on our boards and commissions, and that was important. And as I said, she's got a very long history in the community and knows a lot of people in the community. And I think, and that, that is going to help build trust in the CPRB as well.
Just to be clear, I'm, I'm not commenting on the qualifications just so much as the process and that we haven't had a chance necessarily to talk to these folks, and I think it would be worthwhile, especially also for the public to be able to hear them give a statement and talk a little bit about their interests. And I would request that, at the very least, that we would hold to this vote until we've had a chance to hear from them. That's, that's all I'm, that's all I'm after.
I could also share their applications with you. Would you like, that, that, that information is included in their applications. I, I would urge you to go ahead and approve these tonight. We're down two people on the CPRB, and they have a great deal of work ahead of them, and the sooner we can get them seated and trained, they can get on with the work of the board. And I, I specifically invited Mikhail and Ricardo to participate in the interview so we would have their perspective. And they both approved and supported these two appointments. Dennis.
Well, yes, I don't personally know these people. And I, I appreciate the idea of getting a chance to meet them and talk to them. I'm willing to take Bill Brown's recommendation. He's got a personal insight into one of the candidates. And as far as the board in general, I think it's really, really important to have people of color on that commission, especially representing the African-American community. And, you know, I mean, that alone, I mean, it sounds like she's totally qualified as far as her credentials go, and she's probably a thoughtful individual. And if Ricardo and Kale have approved, you know, the selection and the mayor's been able to, to look at it, I'm willing to trust it, but I also, if we vote tonight, and I guess I would be ready to do that, to accept them, but I would invite them to come to the next meeting, the committee of the hall meeting, and introduce themselves. And we can learn more about them at that time, and maybe in the future, significant boards and commissions might be, include an interview with the council as part of that experience.
Julie.
Jared, would you support them coming to speak next week at the committee of the hall briefly, and then have a vote at the following council meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's all I'm really asking for, just a chance to hear, hear from their, from their own voices and just a brief discussion with them. That's, that's all I'm after.
Bill Colebrook.
I think Mary, you make a good point that the CPRB has a lot of important work in front of them. I think it's kind of late in the game to be, you know, changing the process. There's four people that, that interviewed these, you know, the candidates. You know, two of them, you know, are members of the CPRB. I think we have to trust, at least tonight, you know, their recommendation. If we want to change the process, we can change the process in the future. Since the CPRB has such important business to do, I would support approving these tonight, and then perhaps, you know, with some of the other suggestions from other council members, we can change the process in the future, but I think it's kind of late in the game to change the process tonight.
I have to agree.
Charisse.
I have to agree with Bill. I think that changing it tonight, this is something that should have been brought up before an, an issue or, you know, it, it should have been something maybe brought up before regarding the, the council input. I'm not, I'm not against council input regarding appointees and so on and so forth. I'm an appointee, too. But, so to speak, but, maybe in, in later appointments, we, especially considering CPRB, we may want to consider having them speak, you know, present, just like when you have to appoint a new council person. Because of the simple fact that they are going to be going through a lot of training, and they are going to be going through, you know, they're going to be putting a, their opinions are going to really matter concerning important issues, but not tonight. I think that I have faith that Katrina and that Tony will serve well based on the fact that they have been interviewed by the people that they will be working with. And they both show, in, from what I've seen with the, their paragraphs, that they are capable. And I also think that it's important for there to not just be a female, but that there is a black female on CPRB. I think it's very important. And I'm not going to question her qualifications based on the fact that I didn't get to ask her a question when the people that she'll be most working for or working with have already thought that she meets those qualifications.
I thought I saw another hint. Mary Alice.
I just wanted to ask, I mean, I think we have, if I remember correctly, 164 positions on boards, roughly speaking. Is that right?
Yes.
And, and I, Jared, I hear you when you're saying that this is more of a rubber stamp procedure. I think it would be helpful to city council if we were just sent the applications just so that if we had a question, we could bring it up at that time and say, you know, it'd be really good to hear, you know, from this person, or may I be involved in this conversation? It's not something that we've done in the past. I recognize that there's a lot of positions that you're trying to fill. So that would be my, my recommendation for how to move forward.
You want every single application?
You can forward them, or you can put them up on a box or whatever. I, I'm just saying that if there are, it's just an application that gets sent in, right?
Right, right.
And people don't have to read them if they're not interested, I guess is what I said.
Sounds like it's a Dropbox.
It's a Dropbox thing.
Portal.
Yeah.
You can, you can go in there and look and see if you want, okay.
Exactly.
Okay, that's, okay. And with regard to specific boards and commissions, if, if, for example, with the CPRB, that would be a change in the, probably a change in the ordinance in terms of how the members are appointed. So if that's something you want the board to look at, that would be, that would be another approach to take for this particular board.
And we expect there will be changes, perhaps, in the ordinance.
I expect it, yeah, yeah. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Yes.
Ms. Laut.
Due to my only being on this for the week and not having had an opportunity to think this through more clearly, I'm abstaining in this particular question.
All right. Ms. Hersi.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
No.
Okay, that motion passes, and that is the end of our business for city council, and we will move right into the Cunningham Town Board meeting when the city clerk gives us the go-ahead. Thank you.